School franchise agreement for state of Florida school district.
I can't read about the information here. We've got to be translating from another line. I think someone's going to understand that second, that there will be a translation.
Superinstitutally in English.
Say that again.
The information here talks about another line. The one that just says that it's an English translation and the second one says we'll be translating into another line. And that is what we're going by.
Well, are you asking that question for ELL students? Yeah, there are accommodations within the platform. They may not be able to utilize the curriculum piece for the actual translation piece, but there are other tools that we can utilize to translate.
Okay, so they can translate?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So there are a couple of obviously questions on the first page with the green tongue. There's new boxes checked.
Okay, refer to Mr. Bradshaw.
That's not my call. That's not a legal question whether you want to do it for one or three.
It's number two. For those of you that are not seeing it, the customer hereby agrees to accept the franchise agreement for A, three academic school terms beginning July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023, and B choice is one academic school year, July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. We have to check one of those boxes.
Is there a recommendation from staff? And if so, is there, I guess the other question is, do we know if there's a financial difference depending on what we get?
We would recommend one year and there's no financial difference.
You always have that out clause in every one of these things.
So then this has come up before. We were told, I thought, that we could not obligate for three years or five years or something, we could obligate for one year and renew. Is that still the way it goes?
You can obligate for more than one year as long as there's an out clause. You either have to have a non-funding clause in there that says that if we don't receive funding for it, then we can, a non-appropriations clause, you don't appropriate for it and we're out, or usually there's a 30-day out clause, is which I like, but this one has a 90-day out clause, which is fine, because I'm assuming they don't need that amount of time to wind down students and classes and things like that. So as long as we have an out, but yes, man, you can't enter into a three-year contract that you cannot get out of because you can't pledge future loans.
So one other thing I noticed is that I never see in the document any reference to the name of our school. It's going to be Citrus Virtual, correct?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be wise so that everyone is clear on our school being Citrus Virtual that F, that Florida Virtual FLBS agrees to that? Or, I mean, that would be a simple...
I don't know why they would even agree to what we call our school. That's, they're just selling us...
Yeah, I mean, that's what I agree to. I mean, we might as well put it in there. Let's, I mean, can't we call it Citrus Virtual? Is there a problem with us putting it in there?
Legally, we're the Citrus County School Board, so I don't know if contractually we can, I'm not sure where we would, we would add that as a name.
Well, we could add it if, in the first paragraph, and they're doing business with us as Citrus, I know we're calling it Citrus Virtual School, right?
Yes.
It's what we said to parents.
I guess I'm not sure what the purpose of it would be. What is the purpose of needing to have it named in the contract with the vendor?
Well, the purpose would be so that if we advertise it as Citrus Virtual, that they don't come back and say, no, this is Florida Virtual, right? I mean, we're entering into a contract with them, their licensed product is FLBS, right?
We're utilizing your curriculum.
Correct.
It's not much different than our textbooks. So that's why I'm trying to understand. I mean, we wouldn't tell our textbook company, you're going to sell it to Crystal River High School, Citrus Springs Elementary.
Right, but if we took their textbook and renamed it what we want to call it, they probably would have a problem with that, right?
But it doesn't. It's not branded on each of their website, I mean, on each of their LMS. It doesn't get, I believe, custom branded Citrus Virtual or Orange County Virtual or Seminole Virtual.
I think, I think if you look at the title of the Florida Virtual School Franchise Agreement for State of Florida School District and that, they probably use the same contract in the school district.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, just to be neat and tidy, I'd like to put it in there, but that's okay. I don't think it's going to hurt anything. It just clarifies it.
I mean, I think we could, if we were wanting to establish the name Citrus Virtual, we could probably do that in a separate vote, if that's what we're wanting to do. But I don't know that it has any bearing on the Florida Virtual contract.
I think just, I would just think for parents' sake, I mean, we have sent the message out that they can enroll in Citrus Virtual School full-time, that they would know that, I mean, what Citrus Virtual School is, is FLBS, but, you know, if other board members don't feel like it's necessary, then I'm going to, let me go to page four though, on the business hours. Can you explain the business hours for me on that, on what that involves, 8:00 AM, 8:00 PM, the business hours of the...
It's to allow availability for teachers, parents.
I'm going to have Deb Dumas speak to that.
Okay.
Good morning, Ms. Dumas.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm not looking at the contract, so I don't know exactly what it, thank you.
So the audience, it says, and it's C.
Business days.
Business days.
Business hours, these 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM Eastern Time on business days. Do they, does Florida Virtual do contracts with out-of-state, for the time?
Yes.
Yes, that's probably it. So they, they, they...
They're working with Arizona.
...do themselves, do their Eastern State point? They do something out in the Pacific, they got to conform to this time.
So the business hours of Florida Virtual is not the business hours of our teacher's office?
Not necessarily. However, if you're operating a virtual program, knowing that some families are going to do work in the evenings, you're going to ask teachers to have some evening hours at 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Not that the teachers work 12 hours straight, but that they would have some office hours during that stretch of time over the course of the week.
Okay. And because these teachers are going to be our teachers, our employees, so from the HR standpoint, how does that look as far as contractually and they're agreeing to these business hours?
Deb, help me answer that.
Please, thank you.
Even when we did our virtual school or online distance learning past few weeks,
Right.
we did ask teachers if they would be available for certain hours, and we know that teachers did flex, some of their hours still honor their seven, three, four-hour days. So depending on how many, what grade level, those types of things, those will be conversations we'll have with teachers. The least make themselves available maybe a couple of times a week in case parents get home from work and need help. So we'll work with them and through the union because we know a lot of this is going to end up going back to the union.
Okay. Obviously, teachers are doing this, I mean, the Florida Virtual teachers are, but are other districts, have they done this already prior to COVID?
Yes.
Okay.
There are several districts that have really done this.
And so they're...
And have done it for several years.
And have done it with their teachers' union or with their understanding, okay? Okay. Yeah, the delivery of licensed materials, so they give us one copy, but yet all of our teachers are going to have all their materials, right? It says on page six that they give us to the customer one copy of the most current release.
Teachers will only have access to, of course, their site to teach.
So you're going to have a master, you're going to have a master copy of their curriculum, of all their courses?
Teachers and students both log into FLBS's LMS, Learning Management System, to access the course. So every teacher would have access to whatever course their site...
But we as the customer have, will get a copy of their entire curriculum?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have access
Okay.
to all the classes that we asked them to provide.
Okay.
Mr. Don, we just don't, we're not going to enter into multiple licensing agreements for each and every class.
Sure.
We're getting one license from Florida Virtual to use their products.
Right, and the appendix that has all the courses doesn't mean we're going to offer all these courses, correct?
Right, it depends on teacher certification, who is able, and student interest is driven by student enrollment.
And how many students would need to be in a class to be able to offer it?
Depends on...
I'll answer that.
Go ahead, please.
It depends on grade level. If we end up, and I'll just shoot crazy numbers. Say we have 30 elementary students who sign up for the full-time virtual, then we could hire one elementary teacher to oversee their curriculum for the elementary. If I have two algebra students, two geometry students, two science students, it depends on the secondary world, if I'll have enough students to be able to hire a teacher to do one course. So we're really waiting on numbers to come in from parents, registering their kids to see what type of reaction we get, how many.
Okay, but in reality, they could sign up for a course that we're going to put out there, that there may not be enough students to have the course, right?
Correct, and then we may have to have a conversation.
We may have to go back and say, listen, we weren't, we're not going to be able to offer that course. Okay.
We have had, especially in the math area, we've had one teacher teaching two different subjects when there's only five or six, especially with the advanced and higher level math when they teach more. Is that still going to be available? As long as you've got a teacher willing...
The student interest team will drive how we react and how we hire the teachers and how many. And yes, if a teacher could teach two math and we're only got two kids...
Yeah, and they'll probably step up to the plate, they do, and then...
And we're not bound by class size for our virtual courses.
So like, as, you know, like driver's ed, I mean, are we going to offer that?
I really wish they'd get behind the car to do it, but yeah.
That's going to be the course offering most semesters.
Yes, because Florida Virtual, their curriculum, whatever they have available that we're going to be able to teach, we'll talk to students around.
But at the high school level, we don't give them parking permits unless they take the teen driver challenge here in Citrus County for sure.
Right.
Correct.
So there's a lot of things that we have to work with.
So we're not going to push drivers ed through the virtual school.
Well, they're two different courses. Those are two different courses.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So we'll keep you posted on how many students have registered and, I mean, this is going to be, I think yesterday we had 52 total for the entire district.
They've got, that's the 9/11, right? And then we are going to have a miracle master schedule in the third day.
Well, they're working on the master schedule now.
Superintendent, and either you or Ms. Dumas can maybe ask, am I correct, though, that if you have a teacher that's, let's say, certified in six through 12 ELA, and let's say that I think on average a teacher does about 40 students for a virtual learning, and I'm just using that as a rough number, you wouldn't have to have necessarily 40 students in English, ninth grade English, because if they're certified through six through 12, we just need 40 students that they would have between six through 12 to fill a teacher spot. Is that generally the case? And not perfectly, but in some cases?
Not perfectly. You wouldn't want to overload the teacher with preps, and that teacher shouldn't teach, yeah, nine, nine different courses.
Nine different, right, yes.
But yes, if they taught, I think the recommendation is typically have 12 and four preps.
So, so, okay, so they might be teaching nine through 12 or six through eight, and as long as there is a, is 40 within that number, you wouldn't necessarily, again, have to have blocks of 40 kids that one teacher taught in one group. And I think that's how you get there.
Right.
And that's why I've heard kind of the teacher that has the more certifications becomes very valuable to virtual learning because they have more flexibility when you're building that virtual schedule.
What are the non-FLBS courses offered by the customer that are not covered on the FLBS umbrella? It's on page 13, they've referenced that. It's dealing with the NCAA, obviously, I know they've been trying to work through that so that athletes or students who attend Florida Virtual can compete at that level, but what does that mean?
FLBS offers some courses to the district that only district teachers can teach, their credit recovery, and they are not accepted by NCAA.
I got you, okay. And then on the non-solicitation agreement, and this might be more a question for Mr. Bradshaw, if a teacher were to decide to leave us and go to work at Florida Virtual, are they binding themselves by...
There's a provision in there that talks about stealing.
Yeah, but I'm just kind of curious, how does that work? I mean, we could prevent a teacher then from leaving us and go to work for them?
Is that the eventual policy?
The same, is it from district to district?
Yeah, you can't recruit. There's really nobody talks about it.
If a student left...
They're not going to recruit our teachers to come work for Florida Virtual.
Okay, so if a teacher were to make that decision on their own?
Right. I think, I think there should not be any contact. Florida Virtual should be, start calling, you know, calling you and saying, hey, you're a great history teacher, we want you to come work for Florida Virtual instead of working for the school district.
If you decide to, you probably don't know what we can do about it.
So on page 20 is the, it's a list of some of the courses. I was kind of interested in the career and life skills courses, and that's where the driver's ed was that I talked about, but, so again, we have guitar, so I just want to make sure, when the parents see this, they're going to see all these courses, right? But like, if they sign up for guitar, they're really not, if we don't have a teacher to teach it, we're not going to be able to have guitar, right? So are we going to, can we limit, or is there a way to eliminate some of these from our, okay?
We give Florida Virtual these courses that we have teachers certified to teach, and that's all that will appear where the students go to register for these courses. We'll have a Citrus County course list.
Okay, good, good. So, and it's just kind of funny, outdoor education, I think is the most expensive course out of all, like, what is outdoor education?
Because...
$97.
Because they get your hunting fishing license, so there are additional fees associated with a student taking those courses. It's not all held within the Florida Virtual platform. That is one of the most popular classes.
Yeah.
And yes, it is the most expensive. I thought it too. I knew it was expensive, I didn't realize it was that much more expensive.
So do you think we might be offering that?
It is a course that any teacher with any certification can teach, and it's one of the most popular ones. We lose funding to FLBS every year, but hopefully to offer it. Even though it's more expensive, it's still a whole lot less expensive than letting the student go to Florida Virtual to take it.
I got you. Another question that I had deals with the devices, because I didn't see anything in here on the responsibility of who provides the device. I assume that's going to be a cost that Florida Virtual is going to incur, or am I wrong on that?
You're not correct. By statute, we have to provide devices to students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And then, is Androski still in here?
If there are students, though, I guess we have to, if we're going to supply every student with the device, then I, then we'd have to supply them all those students too? Is that, am I correct in that thinking, or?
There are students.
There are students.
Yes.
It's kind of funny that there wasn't in the agreement anywhere, because that's obviously...
They don't operate, they would, they would have to handle it from their student enrollments directly at Florida Virtual. We have the contract in place that we did with the iPad, that they're responsible for it, and with that insurance that we offer, the iPad holds true for these.
Would they be afforded the opportunity by the insurance?
Yeah. Because we're going to hold them responsible if they don't return it in good shape.
But some, again, some students may opt to use the device they have at home instead of wanting an iPad. We found that out this past year when we did distance learning. You know, there were a good number of people that said, we just won't use our own device.
And so they'll have that opportunity to opt out then with us?
Yeah, and if, like you said, there are students, it's a difference between Citrus Virtual and a student going to FLBS. Citrus Virtual, there are students, so we would have to provide them with a device like we do with all our other students. And then if they qualify for free and reduced lunch, then they would also qualify for some type of internet service that we would have in the line.
I believe, though, we've had to do that regardless of this contract because of statute anyway.
You're right. And this isn't...
So this isn't being driven by that, that's already in statute.
Absolutely.
But yet, like, the students mentioned about trying to get this marketed because we want them to sign up for Citrus Virtual and not Florida Virtual, I mean, in order to keep them as our students.
No, I just mean the obligation. We've already had that obligation.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. So do they use Zoom? I noticed they talk about the welcome phone call. I know there's a lot of phone inter, or there's phone, but is Zoom being used in Florida Virtual? Okay.
And with our teachers, we can require that. Florida Virtual requires a live lesson a week for their teachers. Each teacher has to at least one live lesson a week. I think we would have that expectation as well with our teachers, and they could use our Zoom license.
Okay. And the final exam, the requirement, obviously, they have to take the final exam. Can you kind of explain that process as far as how that looks with Florida Virtual?
Yes. Virtual courses are not based on seat time, number of minutes. They are based on completion, which means that they have to complete every portion of the course, including the final exam. I think we waived final exams this spring because of distance learning, but virtual courses, you're required to complete the entire course.
Right, so if a student was or is enrolled in this virtual program, they didn't get final exams waived with Florida Virtual?
Yeah, my expectation, my understanding is they did not.
And most, I mean, I've got to say this, that going into this, I mean, these students that are signing up are going to commit to a semester, right? And I think it said if it's 20, if they have 20% completion, it's billable, so they'll bill us for it, but we want them to stay in for the whole semester and complete because that's what we're going to be paying for, right? And once again, in what, 30 days or 20%, I think, we're, we've got to pay for them to pay for the program.
You pay for the course, which is anywhere from 45 to whatever the outdoor at 95, 85. You pay for that course after 30 days, or 20% complete. But we can't report for FTE funding until the student has completed 100% of the course.
Is there any clapping?
No.
And how, how is the EOC exam completed then? I mean, it says in the contract it will go, what, by the customer's policy? So how would we, how do you envision the end of course exam going?
They would go to their zone school, yes. We would schedule for them to come to their zone school to be administered state assessments.
Okay. Would you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you go ahead.
Are you talking about the playgrounds around the school?
For state assessments.
Because they still are required to complete state assessments.
And I think on that too, we have to accommodate FLBS full-time students in that same matter, today anyway, the principals have all been, they are often scheduling those students. First of all, I want to thank, I want to thank Ms. Dumas, Mr. Kayler, sorry. You and Mr. Vittner, who's not here, because I know there is an enormous amount of work in a committee that's come to the fruition of bringing this before this board, and this, this looks, you know, like it's just a piece today, but those questions you all have gone through and re-asking, Ms. Dumas has regularly been the person that everybody's tapped on the shoulder. Now, okay, one more question, and one more question, and we're not going to stop doing that, which leads us back to a little bit later in our agenda of where we're going with that. I want to thank you all for that work because it's been enormous and it's not been easy, and it's been a lot in a short period of time. One of my questions has to do with, there's two types of FLBS that we're familiar with, or three if we add franchise, but there's FLBS full-time and then FLBS flex. While today, I think the purpose of what's bringing this forward is a franchise to have Citrus Virtual full-time. The question, the next piece of this is not part-time, because that's another piece of that, and I'm thinking of part virtual, part-time, meaning they're going to still be on the fall schedule, calendar schedule, they just may be some additional students we add into Florida Virtual. But will we have flex? And for those who don't know, flex is a rolling enrollment where you start at any time of the year. Is this contract allow us to have FLBS flex as a franchise?
Yes.
Not that we're today looking at that, but it does provide us that option?
Yes, it does.
And approximately, and this is just approximate, about how many FLBS students have taken courses, let's say, last year in Citrus County?
It's in the hundreds, I don't know exactly.
In somewhere, I thought it was in five, 500 or more. So if you take the amount of FTEs that we traditionally would not have gotten having to do with an ordinary year, this would be something we would be, we would have probably wanted to consider anyway at some stage. COVID's just kind of pushed this a little bit further for us. And I think that the, that Citrus Virtual full-time slash part-time, as that may fill in those numbers, what we also, if I recall, with flex, just like we get paid on completion, I think flex is that same way, you only get paid on completion too. It is a very different model, and school districts around the state are finding the amount of FTE that we get, and I know staff knows this well, is different. It's a lower FTE amount than our classic FTE amount. So we know we need to do this, but we also recognize that this isn't for everyone, and this is, this is just another option that we're trying to provide to parents so that the conversation we're going to have in a little bit, this is just another part of that toolbox, that if families don't feel that what we're going to do is right for them, they can consider this. The only other piece is some of these other courses that you talked about, and we would love for them to take from Citrus teachers because we feel like they know them best, they know the culture of Citrus County, but it doesn't limit them if they wanted to get creative. That's the beauty of this. If they decided they wanted to take guitar and we didn't offer it right now, we might offer it later if we find there's enough. But if there's only one student, the beauty of virtual is that, and going with Florida Virtual, is that there is more options that I think we have. So I'm excited about this, and Ms. Dumas, thank you for your knowledge. This is not, if I recall, the first time we've signed a Florida Virtual contract. I know it seems new to us right now, but you've taught Florida Virtual in the county.
The first two years as a virtual teacher, we had a franchise agreement then, but it was just a whole course instead of the multitude of courses. We narrowed it down to just the whole course, I tell them.
So the flex, Tom, we should talk about the flex, but is that going to give students an option or parents an option to sign their kids up after July 11th for Citrus Virtual?
Well, wherever, then that's going to be a conversation I think we're going to have later on here, but that is, that is a real reality around the state right now, that people are looking at flex for after different deadlines, not just ours. Every school district has some deadline, including FLBS full-time has their own deadline. So after that, that you would need to consider a flex option in order to do that. If you decided two months into the school year, you wanted to drop out of school, but you said, I'm going to take homeschool, that's where a lot of homeschools will do that because they're not on a schedule that's tradition to, you know, fall, August through May. They could decide they're going to start in December and/or November or tomorrow if they want it and start courses. That's the, that's the purpose of flex, is it's really for individual families' needs. A lot of us who have kids that have taken courses during the summer, that's what they're usually taking, they're taking FLBS flex.
Because it's based on completion.
Because it's based on completion. The challenge with that too is a student could take the entire course, not, or most of the course, not finish it, and then you don't get paid. And that is a challenge because, you know, that's why FLBS doesn't mind because they're not having to fund that student doing it.
All right, I'll make the motion that we approve Florida Virtual School Franchise Agreement for one year, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mrs. Powers, to approve the Florida Virtual School franchise agreement to the state or sort of school district for the term of one year, beginning July 1, 2020, to, through June 30, 2021. Under the favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Mrs. Wayne? A nice list of goldenrod to approve.
I ask the board to approve the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the goldenrod.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the support and personnel information on the goldenrod.
What you're saying, including your name, is that there are parents and teachers and other kids?
Yes, yes.
Good.
Actually, I'm on grandchildren already.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion passes 5-0.
I ask the board to approve Mark Kaler to be named assistant principal at Citrus High School effective July 1, 2020.
So approved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Bryant, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve Mark Kaler as assistant principal at Citrus High School, effective July 1, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I ask the board to approve Amanda Stringer to be named assistant principal at Christopher Middle School with the effective date of July 13, 2020.
I'll make that motion, approve Amanda Stringer assistant principal at Christopher Middle School.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve Amanda Stringer as assistant principal at Christopher Middle School, effective July 13, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Congratulations, Stringer.
I ask the board to approve Sarai Romalo to be named as assistant principal at Rock Crusher Elementary School with an effective date of July 13, 2020.
Approve Sarai Romalo, and I apologize, as assistant principal of Rock Crusher Elementary.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Powers, to approve Sarai Romalo as assistant principal at Rock Crusher Elementary School, effective July 30, July 13, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
I ask the board's approval to name Brian Hegginsbach as assistant principal of Floral City Elementary School with an effective date of July 13, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Bryant, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve Brian Hegginsbach as a assistant principal at Floral City Elementary School, effective July 13, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
I ask the board to approve the new job description for supervisor of virtual school programs.
I'll approve. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the new job description for supervisor of virtual school programs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
I ask the board to approve Deborah Dumas to be named supervisor of virtual programs with an effective date of July 1, 2020.
Who have approval of Deborah Dumas as supervisor of virtual programs?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve Deborah Dumas as supervisor of virtual program, so much, effective July 1, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You are approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Mrs. Wayne.
Congratulations to all of our new admin, and Godspeed.
Handsome man in the mask, attorney matters, attorney legal matters, any?
No, ma'am.
Any other business that needs to come before the board? Powers, you ready to go first?
Oh, okay. I think I already did everything, I can get it, I thought it was everything, so.
Hi, Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, no, nothing, we'll continue forward.
Scott?
I'm good.
Mrs. Bryant? This is miracle. Wow. Well, I just have to recognize Mr. Kennedy as the new vice president of Florida School Board Association.
Your hair.
Thank you. The picture that they captured of him sitting at a computer at home was, it was, it was, it was precious. And we also need to recognize Captain Ernie Olson.
Yes, yes.
Because he has brought again honors to Citrus County school system. And then, I don't know, I, I read pages and pages and pages of what the staff has done in a very short amount of time, and I don't know how many people were on the committee, but it was like three or four columns long. And I just, I can't imagine all of you, all of the cops which have done, we probably not going to come up with an answer today because we still don't have all these unknowns done from the statement that will open it, but we have to compliment this reopening committee for all the work that you've done, and thank you so much, make us proud of work for this high school. And that's all I have. There being no further business to come before the board, this special meeting will stand adjourned.
We'll open the workshop then?
And we will. Do you want to take a break before, five minutes before the workshop? Okay, we'll break in five minutes, and then we'll start the workshop at 11:10.
This family member believed, it's trying to get in exactly why this became an issue to bring up, just about who's, who's eligible.
My sister, because of her, they have a twin baby, the parents write just.